Welcome, everybody, to our regular scheduled city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, January 6, 2015, and it is 6:00 PM. I'll call this meeting to order, and as always, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll ask Sandy to read the open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so that citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And Sandy, would you take a roll for us to...
Brian Smith?
Here.
Steve Hackett?
Here.
Deb Fenske?
Here.
Paul Hagan?
Here.
Alan Keeland?
Here.
Scott Proczowski?
Here.
Dave Peterson?
Here.
Paul Mayo?
Here.
John Lockwood?
Here.
Gillian Peterson?
Here.
And Eric Olson?
Here.
Nine present, we have a quorum.
Thanks, Sandy. Consent agenda, I think, Sandy, you have one revised...
All right, under number five, consent agenda, letter A, number one, a revised invoice from All Net Consulting was distributed. The amounts stayed the same, it was only a breakdown of his services. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any items, it's pretty small, but are there any items on the consent agenda that the regular council, council would like to see move from the consent agenda to the regular agenda, where we discuss those as individual items? If not, then we'd need a motion to approve the consent agenda with that one revised. Does that move?
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Olson, that we approve of the consent agenda with that one change to the bill for All Net Consulting. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Under the regular agenda, then, Sandy?
Oh, yeah. Under number nine, new business, letter E, additional information was distributed by John Edelbeck regarding the purchase of a used hauling truck.
Anything else that council would like to see changed? Add it, delete it? Again, if not, we would need a motion to approve the regular agenda.
Does that move?
Second.
Motion by Hackett, second by Fenske, that we approve the regular agenda with that one addition? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Announcements and correspondence, this is the time of the meeting where we would entertain public input. If there's anybody in the audience that would, or council members for that matter, that would like to speak to the council on any non-agenda items, feel free to do that. You'd need to step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record. Anybody that would like to give us some public input? All right, we'll move on, then, to the meat and potatoes of the meeting. We have the unfinished business. We have a discussion on reinstating the city's Board of Public Works, and if you remember right, this was brought up by alderperson Steve Hackett, I think it was actually at the December, the first meeting in December. So, since this was brought up by Steve, I'm sure some of you might have some comments, but I'll let Steve start with that.
The only thing I have to say is that I do not have a solution to this, however, in my opinion, the most important department in the city is Public Works. They handle the roads, they handle the water, they handle the sewer, and they handle a lot of other things in the community that we don't even talk about. And he's the only one that doesn't have a committee, so he has no support when he gets here, other than what he gets when we, once he gets here. He doesn't have anybody to bounce things off from him, and I really personally feel that he deserves a committee.
Anybody else have some comments? Alan, you...
I'd like to hear from John about what he thinks about it.
Well, I have talked...
I could've done that, Alan. Go ahead, John.
Well, I have talked to Steve about this several times, and I appreciate his support. Yeah, I mean, I think it would be beneficial to our department to have elected officials or commission or committee or whatever you want to call it, an advisory panel, that's invested in Public Works beyond just the twice-a-month meetings. And I think that's what your advisory, Park and Rec and Library and Police and Fire and other commissions are. They're advocates for that department. They're not tasked with overall city budget, and even though it's ultimately the council's decision, those boards and commissions are out advocating for that department. And they're invested in it because they're attending additional meetings, so. Steve and I talked about this, I guess whether it's an actual board that's statutorily set up through our municipal code, or if it's an advisory panel of three alderpersons that I could meet with or talk about periodically, or something other than that, you know, the advisory panels or the commissions that are set up also have citizens on those groups, and I don't know if there are citizens that would be even interested in being on a Board of Public Works, commission or a panel, or advisory committee. But again, I think what Steve's looking at is the ability for me to go to some people other than every, twice a month, and gain advocates that are invested in the department. And that's really what's, again, ultimately, it's a council decision, but, you know, those people on that committee or task are becoming more invested in Public Works because of their efforts.
Yep.
I like the idea of an advisory committee. I can understand what Steve is saying. Personally, I like having the two meetings because we all hear it at the same time. But I do like your idea of having an advisory committee and having the public on it. This is their money we're spending, and it would be nice to have somebody like that. But how would you set up something like that, or even...
Well, I think you could do it if there was enough interest for it, because it isn't that much different than, for example, the Parks and Rec Board, where they have, they have a couple of members that are on council, but then they also have members at large. Now, don't forget, the Parks and Rec also has township people on there because they receive township money to pay for those. That would be a little bit of the difference, but...
Like city plan?
Similar to city planning, yeah. I would think that you would either want to do a 50/50, I'm just thinking out loud, too, if you were to do this, you'd either want to do like a 50/50 split, where you would have three council members and three residents at large, city residents at large that would be on that committee. I, you know, again, I don't know John either if there are people that are interested, but I think there are, you know, that would be interested. They get paid a lot, so why wouldn't they? You know, that's what I think. I think it would, you know, if you decide to do that, I think it's a good idea. I don't feel that it's, I really believe that we're taking a step backwards if we just set up the Public Works Commission exactly the way that we did before. If you remember before, the Public Works is one of the main reasons why we no longer have the big four, because of some issues that we had on the Public Works Commission as far as making decisions before they came to council. So, if we were going to do this, I would see us changing it a little bit and putting some citizens on there. Anybody else? Scott?
If you remember when we had this vote for the council to change our format to just two meetings and go away with the committees, the vote was pretty close, so I'm thinking there's a lot of our council members, unless they've changed their mind, that maybe would be in favor of going back. I think it keeps us more in the loop, able to make a better judgment on things if we, especially with as much stuff that John has to go through. He's got quite a myriad of things, from the sewer plant to the streets to the equipment. I'm kind of in favor of it, and I'm almost saying that maybe we should go back to the old format of council people.
Okay. Comments? Oh, I'm sorry, Peggy, I saw your hand before.
I just wanted to say that when we were looking for library board members, we put a very small article in the paper, and we had a really good response, so, from citizens who aren't elected. So if you're looking for that, I think that there is a venue for finding people interested.
I mean, truthfully, what, and I don't want to repeat what John says, but it makes a lot of sense to me that ultimately, everything comes to the council anyways with Public Works. So if you are to take up items that ultimately are going to be voted on at the Public Works level, and then also voted on at the city council level, that's what we're trying to get away from, so that we're not duplicating the process. But I do appreciate where John's coming from. It would be, you know, I mean, John's got some great ideas, but sometimes, you know, he doesn't know if it's a great idea until he gets in front of the council and hears theirs. So this would give him the opportunity, again, if you decide to do this, it would give him the opportunity to bounce it off a group of individuals in some kind of organized fashion. So, I mean, I'm not against it. It's an extra meeting, you know, I mean, and that's what we're here for, if that's what you think we should do. But personally, I mean, if you ask me personally, I haven't seen a project that John's brought forward that council has turned down. I think we've all been huge advocates for Public Works. I don't think it's hindered us from getting our job done here. I think it's probably improved it. That's, but again, that's my opinion on that, so. And some of you remember that are old timers on council, and I've probably said this a couple of times, one of the first things that I tried to do when I got on council was, or when I became mayor, was try to change the format of the Board of Public Works so that it did include citizens on there, especially since we have enterprise funds that are included in that, which are the water and sewer funds, too. So, all the more reason why I thought it was important to do that. And at that time, council decided that's not the direction they wanted to go. So, anybody else? I keep doing a little bit of filler here, but...
I think going back to the way it was with the different meetings, I think is a huge step backwards. I like being able to hear everything at the same time, but I would still definitely advocate for an advisory board for you.
We do have this on here so that we can, we can officially make this a motion, if somebody can come up with a motion that they would like to present to council, and if we get a second on that, and then we can move forward from there. It would take, I, we'd have to ask John Harton, certainly we will, but, I mean, if it's just an advisory group, does it take an ordinance change to do that, John? I mean, because if we set up the public board, Public Works Board again, that would take a change in the ordinance, obviously.
And, for the patch, you had what you called the ad hoc committee. I don't know if that's a kind of thing, but then now, I don't know that you need to work with that. You have to set up a committee on your own authority, without having an ordinance change.
So we could try it as an ad hoc committee, and then if they felt that it was going to be on a more of a permanent nature, then we could talk about changing it to a commission that would require an ordinance change. Okay. Anybody else want to make any comments? Anybody want to make a motion?
I will make the motion to set up an ad hoc committee for a period of one year for the Public Works Advisory Committee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Keeland and a second by Hackett to set up an ad hoc committee for a one-year's time to discuss Public Works items and so on, and after that year, we'll discuss it further. I guess I would ask, Alan, because you made the motion, are you talking about, just council members make up that ad hoc committee, or are you talking about...
No, I think if we had public input, too, I think that'd be appropriate, a half-and-half mix or something like that. I don't know if that has to go into the motion or not. And if it does, I'll amend my motion.
I'd like to make a friendly amendment, that it would be a makeup of three aldermen and three city residents at large for a one-year term. Is that acceptable?
It is for me.
Steve, are you okay with that?
When would this start?
Yeah, that's my next question. I mean, do you want to, I would think it would be very difficult to start it at the next January meeting, because if we do, as Peggy suggested, which I think is a good idea, if we put an ad in the newspaper, and council members, feel free to recommend people to me, and I will contact them, too, and see if they're interested, but I think it's probably going to take a good month, maybe even longer. Could we say, like, the second meeting in February?
Sure.
Would that be all right? I mean, and do you want that as part of the motion, or...
Well, the mechanics of the meetings, I guess, have to be sorted out by somebody. I don't know if council should do that or not.
When would they meet?
Who normally sets the meeting time for City Planning Commission, for example?
Well, that's set by ordinance.
That is by ordinance, okay.
I think we would set up a, I think what we would do, this is just me, okay? I mean, this is similar to any other ad hoc or any committee that is set up. The mayor would appoint the members of that with the majority approval of council, and then you would have a first meeting, and then I think you could decide what you felt was the best time to meet, the best day and the best time to meet, and then we could get that out to the public when you would meet. I'm assuming that you would probably meet here, if you had six people.
Yeah.
The conference rooms upstairs are a little...
Well, we want the tape recorder and all that. I mean, it's, you were gonna, it'll be a formalized meeting, it would be noticed, advertised agenda, I presume, at that point.
Yeah, well, it would have to be. Who had their hand up over here?
I did. Is it a rush, or could you wait until April when you make all the other announcements or appointments?
Well, that was my point, too, is that we would be changing that group, at least the council members could change at the April reorganization meeting. So we could start it in April, and then we would have that group for a full year, from April to April.
We've been without it this long, you know, another month's probably not going to make a lot of difference.
Okay. I mean, I'll talk to John Harton, I'll talk to John, and Henry, too, for that matter, on what we need to do to get this done, if it's approved here. Okay. Scott?
Would this committee be taking votes like the old committees? I mean, we used to take votes, and then John would say it was approved unanimously by the, or is this just, I don't know...
It's just an advisory committee. It's an ad hoc committee, so they certainly can make motions in seconds, and those will be in the minutes of that meeting, and how John presents it again. Okay? Okay, so if you vote in favor of this, you are voting in favor of setting up an ad hoc committee that will begin on the second meeting in May? Is that the, or April, I'm sorry. Is that the second meeting? The reorganization meeting? Okay. April, and it'll consist of three council members and three citizens at large that live in the city. Okay? Does everybody understand that? Sandy will take the roll.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Gillian Peterson?
Aye.
John Lockwood?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Deb Fenske?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
And Scott Proczowski?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Okay, next we have, under, that's it for unfinished business. We'll keep you informed on the process of where we're going with that. Under new business, we have a request from Pastor Tyler Paul Wolf of the First Assembly of God Church for the Compassion Connection Fun Run on July 4th of 2015. And I see Pastor Wolf is here tonight. Pastor, do you want to just say a few things about that, please?
Sure. Good evening. Actually, you guys gave us permission last year for the race, and it was a success. We want to change things up a little bit this year. Last year, we had the race start later in the afternoon, which affected our numbers a little bit. We considered it a successful year, but this year, we'll move it into the morning. The idea this year is to have the race start at 8:30. We've changed up the course, where it will start at First Assembly, travel down Berlin, left on Lake Street, or right on Main Street, get to the end of Main Street, where it curves off into Mill, turn around, and same route back. That's an hour and a half before the parade starts going down Main Street, which is kind of the point, that you would have, that racers will have the crowd support on either side of them for about a stretch down. So I think it'll be a fun thing for runners. I've met with the Wapaka Running Club, and they think it's a great idea. So it'll be fun to run in, it'll be fun for spectators, and then there'll be, I anticipate that our slowest runner, according to last year's numbers, will be clear from the parade route with 45 minutes to spare before the actual start of the parade. We, like I said, the race will start at 8:30 in the morning, and we will provide course marshals, people with, you know, crossing geared on at the busy intersections up and down Main Street. It is a fun run, so we, last year, we, racers were on sidewalks. Now, obviously, that would not work on Main Street, as I anticipate, again, the crowds on the sidewalks, so they would be on the side of the road, you know, hugging up against the curb while going up and down Main Street. And so that's the idea.
Okay. Chief, you had a chance to look at it, any issues?
Well, yeah, this is the first we've seen it, what was in the packet, and we prefer to keep throughout the same as it was last year. Having it down Main Street through controlled intersections is not a good idea, and I don't know what their marshals are, but that's not an acceptable person to have at a controlled intersection. You can't have a citizen at a controlled intersection stopping traffic on a green light to allow others to pass. So there's logistics there, and we don't have the staffing to accommodate this request an hour before the parade on July 4th. There were two involved in other projects, so we'd ask that it remain the route that it was last year.
Pastor, how would you do that? I mean, you have the stop at goal lights on Fulton Street, and then also on corner of Main and Badger Street, too. If it's red, are they going to stop?
That would be the instruction that we give to our racers. Again, we advertise this very much so that it's a fun run, that no one's trying to qualify for another race, it's not highly competitive. So we would with that. Now, our first step was coming here to speak with you all about it, but we have met with Chamber of Commerce. Obviously, they planned the parade, and they're on board to work with us as far as those logistic goes, as far, I don't know who their staff is for the parade, but they're ready to partner with us to make it possible to, you know, the idea would be to complement the parade.
Well, we, the parade is...
It's separate. That really has nothing to do with this, unless they start the parade at 8:00 AM to have it under their parade permit. So there's really no connection between those two, logistically, unless it's actually part of the parade, and we could have those roads closed for that purpose. But that's, that's going to take a lot of planning.
Sure.
Where does that start?
And you wouldn't be able to close the, how, you wouldn't be able to close Badger Street intersection, well, you couldn't close both Fulton and Badger Street for that length of time, could you?
It would be problematic, without a doubt.
I mean, you just couldn't do that.
And, from our standpoint, it's not a good idea to plan a race and have them expected to stop at lights. It just doesn't seem like a logical flow. I anticipate problems if that were the case.
So, tell me the route again.
Are you familiar where First Assembly is at?
Yes.
So we start at First Assembly, and we'll head down Berlin towards Lake Street, left on Lake, right on Main, down to where it curves into Mill, and turn around and take the same roads back to First Assembly.
Which is actually Water Street, but yeah, Mill is actually Water there.
Sure.
But what if you were to turn by the post office?
In which direction?
You would run down Main Street and turn, and stop at the Badger Street intersection, and turn and go back. I mean, you would still get some crowd there.
Yeah, well, I would have to...
I'm just...
Keep in mind, traffic is going to increase at 8:00, 8:30 in the morning. People come very early and set up for the parade. Unless we have it strictly controlled, it's going to be very congested. It's hard enough with pedestrians just trying to walk to Main Street with their gear, and to throw in a mix of runners at the same time.
Okay. John?
I think that when you talk about hugging the curb on Main Street, you're out behind the back of parked cars. You're in, you're next to the traffic lane. Either you're on the sidewalk, or with the parked cars there, you're behind those parked cars right next to the travel lane.
There won't be parked cars on Main Street.
There are. People do park temporarily until 10 o'clock to drop off their gear. They stop temporarily, we're on them pretty quick to get them out. But even though we do post it in the morning, people do park there, and we spend an hour or so getting those cars removed. So, yeah, there, you can throw cars parked into that mix, too, in diagonal parking. I just don't see this as a good fit for that time period on that route.
Where is the old route, or the last year's route? Where was it?
The general route is, again, starting at First Assembly, heading up Berlin, and then we take a right, we go all the way to Lake, Lake to, I want to, sorry, I don't have the route, the memorized, but the general idea is down, I believe, down 8 to Park, the hospital, over to Churchill, down to Evans, and back to First Assembly. It's a 5K, so we got, it's, you know, 3.1 miles. So that is, that is our Plan B, that same route as last year.
And I think, Mayor, that's why, when you see the fun run, the fun run's always avoided. I think they've tried to avoid the signalized intersections.
Yeah, they've been in that same area, too, and then...
They've always tried to work not around it, so they didn't go through those during the fun run.
Yeah. You know, I have to agree with you, Chief, and John, I think this would be a difficult thing, but I think it could also be kind of a neat thing for, if you've ever ran in these 5Ks, and you have people, or 10Ks, or whatever you're running, you have people cheering you on, it's kind of fun. And that's the whole idea behind the fun part of it. But I appreciate where you're coming from. I don't know how you, even if you tell runners to stop at the lights, they're probably not going to stop.
Sure.
As an individual that works part-time for doing, putting on these type of races, I'd have to agree with the mayor on this. The only way that, or what the police do, the only way I think it's going to work is you literally have to shut down Main Street completely. You can't, I mean, you need controlled cops at those intersections, or it does not work. And the route that's being proposed to do a U-turn on Main Street without having a cop up there stop in traffic, it wouldn't work either. I mean, if, I don't know what time the parade starts, I'm unaware what time you guys...
Well, it starts at 10.
What time do you guys start closing the road down?
Yeah, well, people fill in. They kind of dictate when we close the road, but generally about 15 minutes before. But that north end of Main Street too, that's where everybody is staging for the parade. And we do have trailers and floats come down in that area too. It's just to have that whole mix down there is a little concerning.
My, I understand this wouldn't be the place for me to dream and brainstorm for our race, but like you're saying, the idea for the crowd support from the race, if I were to, you know, go back and put together a plan for potentially, and talk with the chamber about the race starting, not at First Assembly, starting maybe near the staging area after Main Street is closed, you know, adjusting our start time and having it run down Main Street through the neighborhood, near the hospital and back to First Assembly, that's something I'd be willing to put a plan together and come back and revisit this.
So you would start the run at like 10 o'clock in the morning?
Yeah, have it start, have it be, because we're saying this with the plan that I'm proposing originally, we're saying it would complement the parade. It would be, give something people to watch during, it'd be fun for, but what I'm saying is maybe the, the solution here would be actually making it part of the parade. For lack of a better way to put it, the first float people would see would be a bunch of runners. And, and there's not going to be a single runner that's slower than a float.
I, 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 well, it, I mean, if we started at 10 o'clock, the, the roads would be closed. It's, I guess it's conceivable that we could do that. When you get down to Lake Street, that gets real congested too, but it would be congested anyway.
The units turn left on Lake and then they, they go in different directions, so that's, that's open at that point.
And, and they're saying the runners would already be passed?
Well, they would have to turn left on Lake. I mean, they would have to follow the rate of, the route of the parade and then after, once they turn on Lake, they can, you know, sidewalk, go wherever.
Yeah. So, yeah, why don't you, are you guys okay with that? See if, see what you can come up with, Pastor?
Sure. Yeah, I'm going to put together a plan with that general idea. Again, it's important that it's as close to five kilometers as possible, so I'm going to put together a map, start, well, I'll probably meet with Chamber first to make sure that they're okay, but starting at the staging area, a route near the hospital neighborhood, ending at First Assembly. Should I just submit that as it, to get on maybe the next meeting's agenda? Submit it as if I was square on?
We meet again on the...
20th.
The 20th, so if you can do it by then, otherwise it's the first week in February, so there's still plenty of time.
Sure.
Okay?
Yeah, thanks for considering it and talking with me.
Absolutely. Thank you. We just have a motion that we tabled this to a future meeting, please? Second? A motion by Lockwood, second by Peterson, that we tabled this request from the First Assembly of God Church until a future council meeting. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Okay, we're on to letter B, or is it two for you guys? The 2015 assessor's contract for Bomar appraisal. Brennan?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. My memo is in your packet. Bomar appraisal has been our contracted assessor since 2004. The city went through an extensive RFP process in 2004 to select Bomar. And over time, they've gone through several different contracts with the city council approval, whether it's been a two-year or three-year contract. Their contract up for, was up for this year and they submitted a one-year renewal for their contract. They've had some conversations with the, at least with Rhonda in my office, who has the main contact with them regarding, you know, maybe for the need to do, for the city to do revaluation. I think that's what is, why they're only proposing to do a one, one-year contract at this time. It's not required by the city. So with that effort and what was proposed in front of you, as part of my work plan for 2015, I would be taking a look at whether or not the city should do a revale in 2016 or if we should do an RFP for consult or contractual services for appraisal, just to kind of keep Bomar on their toes and see whether or not there's any other qualified applicants out there that could provide the service to the city. The contract that's in your packet for this evening is for $18,400. That is at the same or just slightly higher than last year's number within the budget. Any questions?
Why not put an RFP out this year for the coming contract and just sort of giving it to Bomar again, right?
Well, it's, it's twofold. I mean, I think either way, it would be doing an RFP, but it's going to be an RFP whether or not, it's just going to be for assessment services or if we're going to be looking for a full-blown revale, or revale for the city. Again, we're in line with what per state statute is what we're allowed to have for the revale, but, you know, we've had numerous cases, you know, that's been brought to my attention over the past year and Rhonda about, you know, different house prices and different neighborhoods and everything else. So we want to take a hard look at and get some, you know, outside assistance to see whether or not it's in the best interest for the city to do that. Keep in mind, that's going to be a relatively extensive project, an expensive project that the city may have to budget for in 2016 if we were to go down that road. So that's why I want to take a, a look at whether or not we need to do it, whether we should do it, or if we should just do an RFP for 2016.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Motion?
I'd move for approval.
Second? Motion by Fenske, second by Hagan, that we approve of the 2015 assessor's contract with Bomar Appraiser for an amount not to exceed $18,400, and this would be for a one-year term. Any further discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Jillian Peterson?
Aye.
Deb Fenske?
Aye.
John Lockwood?
Aye.
And Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Okay. Thanks, Brennan. License report number 1259, this is a dance hall license, there's two local establishments on there.
This is approved license report 1259.
Second?
Motion by Lockwood, second by Pritchatsky, that we approve of license report number 1259. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. License report number 1260, which is operator's license or bartender's license. Again, we have one individual on there.
Make a motion to approve license report 1260.
Second?
Motion by Lockwood, second by Keeland, that we approve the license report number 1260, which is operator's license. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. All right, let's go on to authorization to purchase a used hauling truck per our 2015-2016 capital plan. John?
Okay, in the approved budget, capital budget, we had the replacement of a hauling truck with the purchase of a used 10-yard hauling truck. Just for comparison, if we were to purchase a new hauling truck, 10-yard hauling truck, we'd be looking at probably an exceedance of $125,000. So this truck is used for hauling snow, hauling dirt, other materials, hauling disposal material from main brakes and that type of thing. So it's really our only major hauling truck that we have in the city. We have reached out to vendors throughout the state and we've been able to identify four trucks. And I put a chart together for comparison purposes. And I'll just go through this because I know you just got this tonight, we were working on this even today. We have truck number one is a 2011 International, 315 horsepower, has about 62,000 miles, condition is very good. It's a cab chassis, it is a current hauling truck, and that price is $85,169.50. And actually, on the backside of the memo is a picture of that truck that we're proposing for a purchase tonight. So the truck is $85,000 with title, license and service fees, we're looking at $85,169. You can see that, that it's a, obviously, 2011, it's in good shape and it will service for many years. It does have a 12-foot Monroe snow plow, and with the pictures that we have on that plow, it looks to be in new condition. So that would be a benefit as well. Truck number two is a 2005 Sterling, 280 horse, 141,000 miles, condition is good. It is a cab and chassis, and we would then have to modify that frame, we would cut the frame down and actually put, install a new hauling box. So again, it's just a cabin chassis without a hauling box, so it would require us to add a new hauling box with hydraulics. So the estimated cost for that is about $75,000. Again, a little bit older truck, 2003 then, Sterling, 275 horse, 82,000 miles, again, cabin chassis at $49,900. We would be adding a hauling box to that with hydraulics, it'd be about $79,000. And truck number four is a 2001, this is a plow truck, international plow truck, 300 It needs some work, it's estimated at about $60,000 with repairs that would be needed on that truck. And that, that truck is a possible trade-in from another municipality. So that's not a secure purchase at this time. I talked about on the truck number one, there is a snow plow, a 12-foot snow plow that we would be able to utilize either on this truck or other trucks in our fleet, which is a bonus. And also with truck number four, there is a used plow wing and sander, again, that's a 15-year-old truck with that equipment on there. We do, currently, our fleet is international, so there is a benefit in purchasing an international used truck for parts and knowledge of the use of the trucks operating and, and maintenance. And the Sterlings are no longer made. That doesn't mean we can't get parts for them and such, but the Sterling trucks are not in production anymore. We're recommending, our staff is recommending the purchase of Midstate Truck then for truck number one, which would be at the amount of $85,169.50. We did budget $85,000 for this truck. And we will be selling our current 25-year-old plow truck, hauling truck, we will be selling that on mostly, most likely on an online bidding, Wisconsin Surplus online bidding, and we'll, we'll get thousands to tens of thousands of dollars for that truck. So obviously, that would far exceed the budgeted amount with that trade-in or resale of that vehicle. This truck will be required to pass any federal DOT inspections and our inspections for any needed repair, but it looks to be in pretty good shape at this point.
Okay, so John is recommending that we go with truck number one, which is that 2011 International truck. It's very close to what you estimated it was going to cost us.
Well, are all four of these trucks from the same dealer? No. Midstate, another one's from Oshkosh. Monroe is, would be providing the hauling box from DePere. LNS is Appleton, so we really have three truck vendors and a separate truck box firm they're getting a quote from. And so you heard back from three dealers, that, just three? Yeah. And how many did you reach out to? Um, I'm not sure how many Roger did, but there are not a lot of vehicles out there. We had, we had quotes come in for trucks with 300,000 miles on them. There aren't a lot of trucks available. So I'm not sure how many he reached out beyond these three, but these are some of the larger truck dealers in the state that we deal with. I was just thinking that there might be more variety out there, or trucks. Yeah, we thought there would be also. We're not finding it contacting these dealers.
John, the 1990, I can't remember, maybe you say that somewhere, but what do you estimate that you're going to be able to get on a trade-in?
Well, we've had very good luck with municipal, the online, Wisconsin Surplus. It'll be thousands to tens of thousands of dollars, I don't know. I, we don't know that. I mean, it's a, it's a competitive online bidding situation and the bid doesn't close out at a certain time. If you bid, it stays open for 10 minutes, so it continues to allow bidding to take place. I, you know, I don't know. Five to 10,000 is an easy estimate for that truck, could be much more.
Okay.
I just wondered what the mileage is on your current truck that you're going to be selling?
Um, I can...
So you can kind of look at the life of this?
Yeah, mileage is really not a good indication of trucks. The truck number four only has 35,000. It's a 14-year-old truck, it's a truck from the city of Chilton. So it's, it's being used to plow and has taken quite a bit of damage. Our current truck is 60, I believe, 63,000 miles. There are, there are 63,000, the fuel gauge doesn't work, parts are obsolete, we can't get parts for it. The heater's stuck on high, thank God.
Be careful what you're saying, we're trying to sell this.
Yeah. Heater's stuck on high, fortunately, which isn't the best in the summer. Yeah, I mean, it's a 25-year-old truck, but it has 63,000. So I wouldn't say mileage is a good indication, but, I mean, there, there's value there. I, I'm conservatively five to 10,000, could be mu, could be double that.
Kathy?
Is that appraised before you just listed, or how do you know?
Um, we will...
Or just listed?
We'll talk to some of the truck dealers and ask them. However, they wouldn't give you anywhere near what you can get on the surplus for. And I talked to two of these dealers and asking about, that's, that's the problem with truck number four, is it, he's hoping that it's a trade-in that he can market it. He goes, they'll probably put it on Wisconsin Surplus and we won't even have access to it. And it'll go for more than he's even estimating. So we typically will talk to the truck dealers and ask them what they think the value of these trucks are. And if we've, if we were to take a truck like that to the surplus and we didn't think we were getting what we could, I mean, you know, I guess we could, I think, once you put it online, but it's very competitive. Yeah. The highway department does it now. The value that you're receiving from these, I, I can, I can go back and tell you what we got from some of our vehicles, they're phenomenal, you know?
John, do you ever, considering this is a used vehicle you're going after, ever book to the internet besides dealers for these trucks?
Well...
Or have you, did you?
Truck number one is coming from West Virginia, so it gives you some perspective on internet. The truck dealers are the experts at finding these trucks.
So they kind of went that route?
Yes. We will inspect the truck when it gets here, it'll have to pass again the DOT inspection. The, as far as warranties are a little bit trickier with used trucks. I talked to the, the salesman about that truck. Midstate truck we do work with, you know, through the years, we've purchased trucks from them. And he said if there's something wrong with it, we'll, we'll take care of it. If it breaks a year from now, maybe not, but that's always the risk, purchasing a used piece of equipment. But yeah, it's, that's what I'm saying. We thought that we would see a number of vehicles available, but that's not the case. And I think, I think we've got a real good purchase here, to be honest with you.
A couple of questions for you, Kathy, if you don't mind. One is, why don't we start with that? The cost of buying this is $85,000 and that's included in our, in our capital plan, which is borrow. How would we pay for that right now?
Well, depending on the timing it is, we can, we're going to be putting together our financing plan with all the other requests from the department. So I think the state trust fund was probably about four weeks, so depending on how fast this moves, we could easily have the funds available, you know? And you usually can work with the dealer for purchasing, you know? It's a couple of weeks we just hold off on paying for it and picking it up.
Okay. And then my second question is, and it has to do with the trade-in, the, the dollar amount that we receive for that, how do we handle that within our?
The correct way to account for any trade-ins is that you show it as a source of revenue. You still have to book the cost of the truck at the full value of what it is, but you're going to also sell off your... But you're going to also sell off your, the trade-in and take that off your asset list. So it's a balancing act. It's still going to come down to the, to the bottom line.
So that revenue then, so we would borrow the full $85,000 or that 10,000, let's say it's $10,000. You would still count as a rev, revenue, but it's going in as cash, so?
Yeah, we still have to, we have to have the full amount unless he can sell that truck beforehand.
Right.
And usually on the auction, it doesn't, doesn't go that fast.
Well, in a happy world, it would. Okay. Thanks, I was just wondering. Anybody else? Jillian?
So when we do sell off our old one, can we take that, whether it's five, 10, 15, whatever it ends up being, can we take that, that cash and apply it right away to that loan?
Well, you could if you wanted to, but it, it would just be considered cash coming into your, your fund. It would be just like any other revenue source that you, you, you would get. It would probably add to the bottom line of the fund. It, it's still, it's still money coming in. You, you would, would still have to borrow $85,000.
Right.
But you still would have cash coming in that maybe when you make a debt payment in the future, that you pull that money to, to do it. But you wouldn't do it right away.
John, you wouldn't probably want to put that used truck on auction before you had the other one, or how would you handle that?
We have another, we actually have another truck, pickup truck that we're waiting on. And we, we accumulate some surplus items over time and then put it forth on the, on the surplus.
So you wait probably?
So, yeah, I, I would think it, it's going to be shortly. I mean, it depends how quickly we can get a hauling truck, but right. We, we would like to have a hauling truck during the snow season.
That's what was my point. You wouldn't want to get rid of one before you had another one, maybe, is what I was asking.
Right.
Okay, anything else?
I would move that we authorize Department of Public Works to purchase truck number one for a cost not exceeding $85,169.50.
Okay, we have a motion by Mayo, second by Olson, that we approve the purchase of a 2011 international truck for an amount not to exceed $85,169.50. Any discussion? Sandy Colerone?
John Lockwood?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Jillian Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Prochatsky?
Aye.
And Deb Fenske?
Aye.
10 ayes, motion carried.
All right. Thanks, uh, thanks, John. Next, we have, again, dealing with public works here, we have authorization to expend up to 63,000 of undesignated general reserves and up to 9,000 of sewer fund retained earnings to cover the expenses accrued, vacation and sick leave payouts for two public works employees retiring by the end of January 2015. Let me make a few comments and I'll turn it over to Henry, and then obviously, everybody has an opportunity to talk about it. John will probably want to say something too here. But Henry's memo is in there and explains pretty well what's happening here. I, I think it's important that we let the public know, of course, though, that past practice has been, when we have a retiree, that we do not replace that retiree until, until we've made up that difference of what the retirement payments are going to be. So it could be six months out, it could be seven, eight months out before, before we make up that difference. The difference here, obviously, is, is that we're going to be down to, as I, at this time of year, snowplow drivers. We can't wait six or seven months until that $72,000 basically is made up before we can hire the individuals. So, I mean, we're in a situation where it's a necessity. We have to have somebody in place. There are a number of positions within the city that I would say you just can't do without, and, and we've had a few of those, and we've, we've had others where we, where we've been able to wait out and appreciate departments that are able to do that. But in this case, there just is not, there isn't that ability to do that this time of year. Now, as John probably will say to you, if these people would have retired, and not, not their fault, I'm just saying, if they would have retired, let's say, for example, the end of April or, or May or something like that, we maybe could have held out for a few months before we did that. But with the timing, we don't want to go through the month of, obviously, through the month of February and, and March without having two full-time, those two full-time positions for plowing. There is a, an opportunity, and I, that we could maybe save a little bit money if there is a, if there happens to be a promotion within the department, we could maybe save a little bit money off that. But this is basically a worst-case scenario where it would cost us $72,000 to do this. Henry, you want to add?
Sure. We're on page 36 of your packet. There's a mayor reference. I did put together a memo. These two employees combined have 60 years of service with the city. So the first comment to be made is they've really, you know, dedicated themselves to our city. One employee has 32 years, the other has 28. So that's a lot of experience to replace. I think they're going to be missed. So we got our notice of the retirements after the budget was adopted. Ideally, we would want to know this as best as we could. In the one K, they were mid, early to mid-December when we got the notices, so we couldn't really deal with it in the budget. But in speaking with Kathy, did pull the mayor in, we do have a, an option to, to manage this, because as the mayor has set this up, they're, it's important in these positions, it's middle of winter. And we would recommend that they be filled timely. And to do that, we could use some undesigned reserves, general reserves, and then the $9,000 of sewer fund, guess retained earnings. Again, this wasn't budgeted in the sewer fund. The idea of charging some of the, to the sewer fund is one employee spends about 25% of their time at storm, you know, in the sewer maintenance and upkeep. So I think it's good to, and defensible to charge it there. I did want to put a statement in about our fund balance policy. Now, again, we're at about 1.5 million, which is about 29% of our general fund budget for 2014. And if you remember, we altered our fund balance policy last year, but it does call for 15 to 25%. And we're at 29. Now, the thing to note here is that it's not all cash. It's assets as well as, as cash. But to get us down to the lower end of that parameter, we would, we would have a fund balance of 800,000 to be at 15% test. So I guess the point I'm trying to make is that there is room to expand these funds. And with the motion of having it up to, and again, implies that we'll be monitoring the budget and we may not need to use all of it. This would be the worst-case scenario. The cost for the payout's about $72,000. So we have a good budget year, some things happen, we might not have to utilize that whole $72,000. And then finally, I think, you know, we're anticipating that we might actually have another retirement later in the year. We look at our workforce, I think it's incumbent upon staff to come forward in the coming month or two to give you some ideas about how to maybe manage these in the, in the future, try to anticipate them better. You know, I don't need to go on a lot of detail now, because I know Kathy and I are going to try to work on this and come up with some, some options. But I, I think it's incumbent on us to try to, you know, anticipate this in the future and so you can budget for it and, and, you know, maybe not try to have this happen again if we can help it. Obviously, we can't dictate when an employee decides to retire, so we're, you know, we're at a little bit of the, their decision process, so. But that's the nuts and the bolts of it. I don't know if you have any questions? Happy to-
I do.
Try to answer it, yeah.
Um, I know I'm going to open up a can of worms. I'm sorry about that. But I understand, first of all, I do want to say thank you to these employees. That is great to see people staying at a job that long. And I'm going to use these guys as an example. What did he make 32 years ago? What was his rate of pay? Because he's going to be paid out at today's rate of pay for all the vacation he has accrued. Is this, first of all, John Hart, is this a law? Is this an ordinance? Is this something that everybody does all the time and just refuse to change it? But I think that these people, not the people who are employed now, we can't do that to them, but any new hires should be getting vacation paid at the rate they earn it, not this lump sum thing at the end of the year, waiting until January when you get your raise, and now they get paid with a bigger lump sum. This is, I have been hearing about this from people, and I totally agree.
I think, Alderman Fenske, I think you're talking about the sick leave accumulated, because it takes-
Yeah, the vacation pay is the, is actually the minor part of this, so-
Yeah, but-
You are really talking about the sick-
You're talking, it takes an employee 10 to 11 years to get to the maximum accrual.
But we're paying it out at the wrong rate. And, you know, is this something, is this a law that we have to do this? Because I don't know. I'm just asking a question.
Does our employee, I mean, it's past practice that that's how we've done it.
Well, everybody does it that way.
But I, is it a, is it a, is it in our-
Employee health, yeah.
Which you were, a couple of members were on that, and you took a look at that and you changed the number of sick days that new employees would be getting, but you didn't change that part of it. You know, I mean, council voted on that right after Act 10. We, we went through a three or four months, it might even have been longer.
And how much? I, I guess I'm just curious, and Henry, maybe you could just send me this in an email. If we had paid at the rate they earned it, all these things, what would the difference be?
The only way to address that is you bank it when they earn it. So you have to put that in your budget.
Okay.
They have earned sick leave, you bank it at the rate they earn it. But then you have to put it into a fund that is earning.
Okay.
That has managed, and you have to have a rate of interest and figure that all out. So you're probably going to come out the same way.
Really?
They bank it at a, at a rate 15 years ago, and that earns interest at 5% for 15 years? You're going to be about where you are.
How come, John?
If you push a pencil.
I guess I'm just, I'm wondering, you know?
Well, that's how it works. It even works that way.
If I take vacation now-
If you actually bank it, the problem they have is they didn't bank it.
Yeah.
They didn't plan for those events.
Right.
You bank the sick leave as it's earned, and that's a budgetary concern, and they hate to do it because it's just going to bank it. It's sitting there for no purpose except for this contingency. So if you bank it 15 years ago, it's going to earn, you're going to have to provide some type of an interest on it, because the federal government's going to make you do that. And then you're going to have a fund to pay it out at the end.
Okay, so they can, if I was an employee of the city, if I wanted to take two weeks of vacation this year?
No, sick leave.
Or, I'm sorry, sick leave. But I'm going to carry it over. So you're going to pay me this year if I'm actually taking it. You're going to pay me my $10 or whatever it is an hour. But if I bank that at $10 an hour, you're saying that when I retire 20 years from now, that $10 I should have been paid for it now is going to be $20?
It might be.
Or whatever, whatever.
On the other hand, if a person gets sick in their 29th year and is gone for six months, and you're paying their salary at that rate against their banked sick leave, comes out the same way. It's almost impossible to figure. If they used it at the end of, before they retired and they were actually sick, you'd be doing the same payout and the same money at the higher rate of pay rather than a lump sum.
Wow.
So not much way around it if you're going to, if you're going to let them accumulate sick leave.
Okay.
Up to a certain extent. Now, the county only allows a certain amount.
Well, we do too.
Okay.
And we've reduced that.
Right.
For new hireys, hires, but people that have been here, they, they get-
Well, the cap changed, and if you remember, we changed that schedule too.
No, we don't remember, Henry.
On retirement? I don't have the, I should have brought the handbook.
Henry?
Yeah, retirement, if you have plus 20 years, you get the 100%, but I think to get even at 50%-
We kept the dollars.
We put on another five or seven years or something. We actually changed the schedule as well.
We didn't change dollar amounts. I think we, it was hourly totals we changed, you know?
We changed it to the cap. You reduced the cap.
We changed the cap, so it's considerably less than these guys could have accumulated, or at least paramount. So the dollar amount will be less.
The reason why we're allowing them to carry any sick leave at all?
Well, first of all, if we do not allow them to carry their sick leave, they're going to use it. And that's going to cost us more money, because we're going to have to pay for that sick leave, plus we're going to have to pay for somebody to replace them on the job.
You know, if we're giving it to them, they should be able to use it. I mean, say you're, you know, you're getting five, six days a year. You take it.
What if you're not sick? What if you're not sick?
Then why give it to them?
Well, you either, well, okay, I mean, we could go to a pub-
Do you see what I'm saying here?
Well, I get what you're saying, but-
I guess I'm an honest person, and I've taken sick days when I'm sick. I didn't use them for something else.
It seems to me that-
It's kind of ethical.
It seems to me to solve your problem is to stop sick days. Because you can't offer six sick days a year and not give them incentives to not use it. Because then you might as well just make them vacation days. Just add them to their vacation days. And they have to use them or they lose them. I mean, and then, and then you're not accumulating anything forward.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm not, Peg, I see your hand, but-
Yeah, me too. The handbook.
But I, you know, and we had a, and Kathy, I think, can probably fill in on some of this too, but we actually discussed this last week. I think in attendance were Henry, John, Edelbeck, myself, Paul Mayo, Kathy, and Roger Hansen. So we did discuss that same thing, that you're talking about, about giving it at their rate of pay and the accounting would be enormous on that and-
I just thought it would be a simple spreadsheet. This number times this rate of pay equals this.
When I didn't even think about what John Hart said. You know, what if you had a, what if you had the big one and you were out for 75 days and you had to use those sick days? You would get those paid at your current rate. You wouldn't get them paid at the $10 an hour rate back then.
Why?
Oh, you'd never get employees higher. If they can't take the sick days at the rate of pay that they're earning at the present time, who's going to, who's going to take it for $10 an hour when they are being paid $25?
First in, first out, last in, first out, high bread, something like that.
No, I mean, I, I'd like to see, you know? I guess, like I said, I guess I'm just ethical.
Well, there, there is a trend-
I take sick days when I'm sick.
There is a trend in the private sector now where they are authorized a certain number of personal days, whether they take for sick or for vacation or whatever. They get X number of days, personal days a year. And, and they can bank that. If they don't use it, they collect when they retire or whenever they leave the company. And, and as I say, that is a trend now. But Deb, to go back to what you're saying, it's just not fair to pay somebody $10 an hour when they're currently earning $25 an hour, whatever it is, from 10 years ago. $10 nowadays is not worth as much as it was 25 years ago.
I know. I think I'm just going to agree to disagree, because I just think it's, it's wrong.
Okay.
Peg, go ahead.
I have the handbook in front of me, if anybody is interested in what our benefits do say.
This is for-
Maximum accumulation.
Pre-Act 10 employees.
Right.
Right.
All regular full-time employees shall be allowed to accrue sick leave. The maximum accrual is 150 days. For purposes of this section, a day is equal to eight hours. For regular full-time employees hired after the date of adoption of this handbook, shall be eligible for a maximum accrual of 90 days. Rules governing sick leave accrual after the 90 days and payout are the same for these new hires. So?
So we're talking, we went from 150 days, which is what these people could accumulate, to new hireys like Aaron, for example, or Brennan, they would get 90 days. to new hirees like Aaron, for example, or Brennan, they would get 90 days, although once they get to their 90 days, if they don't use it, they lose it. So, what kind of predicament does that put you in? Now, maybe in department ads, you, you don't replace them if they're sick that day, but again, you need to, if you're going to offer sick days, you almost have to give the incentive to, to carry those forward if they're not going to use them.
Mayor, I'd like to add one point, and once you hit the cap, you still accumulate a day a month, and in the handbook, you get paid $50 a day. So you had the cap, you worked the whole year, don't take a sick day, you're eligible for $600, and then it's cleared off. You don't accumulate any, you're done. So, and that's paid at, you know, it's paid $50 a day regardless of hourly rate.
So they could get something. Well, that's enough.
And it's an incentive to, you know, 10 years from now, that $50 might need to be $60 or, you know, to keep up, but, but that's how we handle that.
But the handbook also says that the years of employment are, you know, the percentage of your sick leave is, for payout is dependent upon your years of employment, so 16-plus years, you get 100%, if you've only been here for five, you're going to get 50%. So it, there's some fairness built in there for people who are with us long.
I think our main concern is the big budgetary hit, you know, and I think more so than this talk we're having right now, I think it's that big dollar amount, we just don't know where we're going to always get it if it happens, you know.
Do you remember the other discussion we had, Alderman? Right now, we give people the option of taking a payout. Before, it was you use it for health insurance, and so the budgetary impact was much less because that might carry out individual four or five budget years. But that was a discussion point, and it was agreed to give people the option, people felt very strongly about that. When you give people the option, it's taxable whether they take the lump sum or the installments. So I think that's one thought that we had, and we want to talk about it at staff level when we bring something forward, but if we dictated that it could only be used for health insurance and you don't get the lump sum, that addresses the budgetary impact, it addresses the taxable piece of it.
It's mess.
But again, I know the employees-
You really might want to get back to your agenda and take this up at a different time and put it on-
Right, well, that's what I mean, I want to get into woods, but-
It proves to be a different day to discuss all of this, or we'd be here till midnight.
But we want to maybe bring forward some thoughts on that.
Question I have on the memorandum is, what is the fallback position? What if we decide not to approve what you're recommending here? Where's the money come from?
Exactly.
Maybe I can address something that at our, at the mayor, the meeting-
Are you going to answer his question right now?
Yes. Yeah, this is an aspect that we talked about at our meeting the other day.
Okay.
So we have two warm bodies that will be gone the end of January, and they're obviously critical to us right now. We're proposing, we've, we've solicited for applications, and we have a number of applicants we'll be starting to look at, and we're proposing our department is to replace one of those positions as soon as possible. The other position, we're proposing to hold off until the fall for that other warm body, and to fill that at that time, that's going to help the budget issue that we're talking about here. It, it's not going to be half of what this is, but it's, it's going to be less. We're trying to do that for budget purposes. You know, you know, at the end of this discussion, you know, we might want to talk a little bit about, but there are going to be impacts to snow removal even under that proposal. We have to train people, we have to have a person in the truck teaching the routes, that would be another piece of equipment plowing, so there, there can be some impacts even this year to snow removal. But to address your question, right now, we're specifically looking to hire one person, one warm body, that will still leave an open position. There might be some things within the department that we might recommend that the mayor referred to, promotions or whatever, other things that might happen internally, but there would still, still be a warm body missing until this fall, and we'd like to bring someone on, get them trained, so we're ready for snow removal in the fall, and ready for leaf pickup and all those other things. So that will help with this budget item. It won't eliminate it, though.
I understand that, but I go back to my question, what happened? Where's the money come from if we don't approve what has been recommended here? How do we handle it? Do we have any choice?
I can answer that. If you don't pay it, you will get sued, because you have the money, you have a million and a half dollars in reserve. You do not say we're broke, we have the money, and once you get sued, I suspect, or I'm not certain, given it's a labor thing and it's controlled by lots of things, you probably not only pay this out, but you pay that person's attorney, and then you probably are going to pay twice this a figure. And that just happens. Don't even talk about not-
John, hold on a second.
I'm not saying don't pay them. I'm not saying don't pay them.
John, what his question is, is if we do not approve taking this money out of reserves, what do we do? And past practices said, we wait until we make that up. So we would be down two employees in the Public Works Department. Now, would we have-
But you don't, but you first pay, you first pay the amount.
Let you finish first.
Well, you first pay the amount. You don't wait until you made it up to pay it.
Right, you pay it ahead of time. It's within the budget. I mean, it's within the year that you pay it, you pay it right away. So we would be down two employees in that department. Now, are there employees within the department that are qualified to do the jobs that these two people do? John and Roger probably know a lot better than I do. I would say maybe, probably, but I don't know. But if you're down two people, that means that you're, you're, you might get the main roads plowed, you might even get the side roads plowed, but then you're probably not going to get the manual labor type things that are, that need to be done, like the sidewalks, the city sidewalks and the, and the wheelchair accesses, areas that need to be plowed out and stuff like that. So, I think that's your answer, Ellen, is that if you guys decided not to take this out of reserves tonight, so that we could hire employees, we would just hold off on hiring, and they would have to deal with it. Jillian.
To, to help make up the difference and hold off on hiring somebody, is it possible that it would still save us money to have Falk's Brothers or somebody else come in and help us this winter to cover what those two people would be doing?
Yeah, we're, we, we might need to do that anyway. The problem is, is you have to realize that, that our snowplow driver in our ward is retiring, so someone has to physically know the route, you know, be trained on the route and plow the route and be available, and even to have Falk's available, to have a truck available when we want them, first order, to train that employee to plow, you know, what we're asking for, that's the problem, that's really the problem is, and, and then we're going to train him, and then he's going to go away, and we're going to hire someone else, train someone else again, so.
Isn't that what we pay them for and tell them what we need?
Well, they, we contract with Falk's to haul snow primarily, maybe plow a parking lot for us, I mean, it's pretty limited. For them to take on an actual plow route and to know, learn the nuances of where is a manhole, and where's a fire hydrant, where's that driveway, you know, those types of things, that really, I mean, that's the benefit we're losing with these employees. They know every nuance of every section of the roads that they maintain. We were talking about down by T-Dubs, and that plow driver is retiring, and he knows there's a whole system, and you might think Cooper Street is kind of a minor issue, but that's taken years of figuring out exactly how to move snow where, to do it efficiently, and to make everybody happy, and that's, that's, that's going to take years to get back to that. So, yeah, I, I, we, we discussed that specifically, just contracting it out, but it's just not that, that simple, and if it were, I would be recommending it. We still might need some assistance, as the mayor talked about, even down one employee, sidewalks and, and some of the, the things that you kind of take for granted that happen, the cleanups downtown and that type of thing, you know, there might be some assistance we can get from a part-time person here or there. We have had some of that in the past with, with corner shoveling and that, and there may be some reliance. I mean, down one person is going to be even tougher this winter, to be honest with you. But I think just contracting for them and not hiring anybody, I don't think is the right route, and I don't think that's going to really take us to where we need to get to.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the specific action recommended by Henry in his memorandum.
I'll second it.
Motion by Kealan, second by Hagan, sorry, Paul, that we expend $63,000 out of our undesignated general reserves and $9,000 out of our sewer fund retained earnings to cover the expense of accrual vacation and sick leave payouts for two Public Works employees that are retiring at the end of this month. Any further discussion? I do want to tell you this, and, and we've had this discussion at the, at the level, that meeting level that we had, we're going to do everything we possibly can to try and make this up through budget, budgetary situations, but, I mean, there's no guarantee there. I mean, the budget is the budget, and, and I don't know that there's any room in there, and especially if we end up with another retiree or maybe two retirees this year, hopefully not, but, you know, I mean, we would be looking at even more. But I can tell you that we'll continue to look at, at ways to save on the budget this year to try and limit this amount that we are using.
I'm just going to say something because I've been sitting over here keeping my mouth shut, and it's been hard, but I'm not going to do this because, John, I, I really think that we're going about it the wrong way. We should be putting in a fund when it happens. In other words, when these people accrue this, they, they get sick leave, they get vacation pay, put it in a fund, and then we wouldn't run into this problem every time somebody retires. And if we get another one from Public Works, we're going to be even deeper in debt.
Okay, so to go on-
But I'm not, we can't discuss, I mean, we can't go do anything on it today.
Well, I think it's, it's a good thing to have that discussion, and I think Kathy has some neat ideas on that, so if we want to put that on a future agenda item?
I'd like to see that within the next month or so.
Sure. Okay, I mean, there's no urgency, but let's do it within the next three or four meetings if we, Henry, if we fit that in.
Yeah, we want to do a little research and come up with-
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I, Steve, I would have expected you to almost say I told you so, but you didn't.
I was waiting for it.
I've been biting my tongue.
Go ahead, Steve, say it.
Yeah, go ahead.
Anything else? All right, we'll take a roll call vote.
Scott Pachatsky.
Aye.
Gillian Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
John Lockwood.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Deb Fenske.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Wow.
And Alan Kealan.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Yeah, thanks. Appreciate that. Okay, motion carried.
Motion carried.
All right, awesome. All right, communications recommendations of the mayor. First of all, I want to, John has told me and reminded me, actually, I knew this, but you remember in past experience, the J.C.'s would pick up the used Christmas trees, if you left them on your boulevard out there, they would pick them up on a, on a Saturday and take them to the recycling center for you. They are no longer doing that, so to get rid of your Christmas tree, then you will have to take that, physically take those to the recycling center. You still have the ability to take those to the recycling center, but you'll have to physically do that yourself, or maybe a neighbor will do it for you.
There'd be no fee, there's no fee for disposal of those trees at the recycling center.
Okay, awesome, that's great. Also, we talked about that ad hoc committee for Public Works, although it's not happening until April. If you're interested, or if you have individuals that are interested, that would like to serve on that ad hoc committee, just send me an email, and I'll consider that when I make the appointments. Anything else from council for the good of the night?
Move to adjourn.
Motion by Kealan, second by Hagan, that we adjourn till our next regular scheduled meeting, which is Tuesday, January 20th, 2015, at 6:00 p.m. Of course, subject to call. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried, we are adjourned at 7:25 p.m. Thanks, everybody, for attending and watching.